All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. We're joined by our team today, founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin, Kim Bing, Jessica and Colin. Y'all say hello. Let us know if you're, you know, if you guys have not met our team before, you'll find out where they're from. Maybe a little fun fact today, right? And go.
Hi, guys. I'll go first. I'm Kim. I'm in North Dakota with a couple other team members. Support staff and customer success representative in the ticket inbox. So when you email us with all your fun and exciting questions about Get Oiling, you'll probably hear back from me or a couple other new people now. I'm so excited. The team is growing. And if you can't tell, I've had a little coffee today. But I'm super excited about today's weekly work session and I'm not going to give away any hints. It's gonna be awesome. Yeah.
Hello, everybody. I'll jump in next. This is your token Canadian here from the Get Oiling team, reporting to you from beautiful British Columbia. Out on my lovely patio because that's just how we roll out in this part of Canada. It's, it's, it's just so nice all the time that we take advantage of any time that there's sunshine. I don't have quite as much coffee in me as Kim does. I literally only have one sip in me, so pardon the less enthusiasm, but I'm still as excited as she is to get the, to get this call rolling today and, and learn from the best of them that is out there. So Ashley, please teach us what you have to teach us.
Hello, everyone. Jessica from a little town of Dickinson, North Dakota. I am not a coffee drinker, so I have even less than Colin does. But I am super excited to be here and my fun fact is I am a twin.
Hello and good morning, everybody, and welcome to today's session. And I am equally as excited because we have some awesome, awesome goodies in store for you today. And I'm Amanda, one of the co-founders. And I, fun fact about me is that I love being in the kitchen. I love cooking. I love to toy around with new recipes and everything that, and I, and even after we went gluten-free and paleo in our house. So that's the fun fact about me.
Hey, I'm Greg, co-founder here and founder, co-founder, whatever you want to say there. And yeah, fun fact about me, I was deeply into photography for a while. I've not had as much time since, you know, I've been keeping me very busy here at Get Oiling, but something I do enjoy. We have right behind me, this is a blind curtain kind of thing. And there's some birds out in a tree. We put up a bird feeder there. And so I've got my camera sitting on my desk over there. Every time there's like a, we had a Baltimore Oriole fly by one day. So I've got some really cool pictures of that. So yeah, that's kind of a, my fun fact.
Neat, neat. That's so cool. Good to see you guys. Good to see everyone here in the chat. We got, what, Louisville, New York, and several, hey, what's up upstate? I see you. I was just up in Lake George. I got the shirt to prove it. I was just up in Lake George. Love it up there. Hello, California, B.C., a fellow twin, Arkansas, Virginia, more California, Indiana, Kansas City, Arkansas, Key West, Ontario, Missouri, Saratoga, North Carolina, Idaho, and more. I love you guys. Thank you for being here. Today, we're going to talk about the greatest asset in your business and I'm going to do a little training for you. And then we are going to move over to a couple of really key announcements. A really cool thing about our platform is that we are built by and for Young Living distributors. And that means that when there's something that you really need, when you're using our platform or you're outbuilding in the field and you're like, man, I just really wish I had a thing that did that. Like the reason why we have the features we do is because people like you have said, hey, can you do that? Can this do that? And so today we have three new things to announce, to share with you that your system can now do because you asked for it. So thank you for being a part of this community and for helping to make what we do better for everyone. Really excited to get to those announcements here after I do a little training for you guys. All right. So first things first, actually here just again to, since we're, we're growing so much and the video of our faces does show up on the recording, can we go ahead and just pop our videos off here? While we've got the slides up and then we can come back to it. Team, thanks. All right, perfect. So today we're going to talk about how to manage your most important business asset. Now, for those of you who got the email about what we're training on this week, you already know what this is. But, but if you maybe missed it, if you're curious, if, you know, maybe you think you know what it is, if you want to give it a guess, go ahead and put it in the comments, what that might be. So I want to welcome you. We're going to talk about that most valuable asset, how to use it, manage it, manage it and grow it, and some new Get Oiling features, and of course, our Q and A. So if you came here today looking for help, we are here to help you, to get hands-on with you, even if it has nothing to do with the subject matter of our training today. We created this weekly session as a way for you to get support for those of you who really just need some live handholding or an explanation beyond what you're seeing. We're here to support you with that. Just make sure that you add those to the Q and A because they can get lost in our very active chat. All right. So I want to ask you guys, maybe just a quick show of hands. Do you consider yourself an online business owner? Is this, is this how you have looked at yourself? I mean, we got a few, but it's definitely not the majority of us, right? It's not how we come into this business, right? But the thing is, well, first, you are an online business owner as a distributor of Young Living. The reason why is that you're not just walking, like holding your, your new prospective member by the hand and, you know, moseying down to the Young Living corner store to place their order at the counter with the clerk, right? We are not brick and mortar. We ship from warehouses, but all of our ordering, everything we do is online. If you think about it, right, they gotta sign up on the website. Everything is website, website, website. Yes, there may be some instances where you process orders on forums, but at the end of the day, what we are are online business owners. So if you ask anyone who knows anything about building an online business, any online business, they're going to tell you that your greatest business asset is your list. How many of you have heard this before? Maybe a quick show of hands. Have you ever heard that your list is the most valuable thing you possess? See, the thing is, if you've ever done any kind of business training of any kind, especially if it is in sales or account growing, or, you know, any kind of business development position that you may have been in in the past, your book, right, your black book of contacts, your people who you, who you know, your network is the most valuable thing that you possess in basically any business. But the way that this translates to an online business is your list. This is your list of contacts. This is your, your text and email, specific contact information. This is, and actually, before I move forward, this is not your Facebook friends list. All right. Really importantly, this is not your social media contacts. This is not the people who follow you, vanity numbers. Your list are specifically the people who have opted in to hear more from you as a lead or who have purchased something through you as a member of Young Living. Or of course, if you, you know, sell or do other things, if you have clients in other ways, those are people on your list as well. This is not social media numbers. This is literally, I can send an email to all these people right now, numbers. That's your list. Okay? Your greatest asset is your list, and this is why. First, you own it. Okay? There are a lot of people, and you guys, I, I work with myself directly with leaders in Young Living, and there are leaders who are being kicked out of their Facebook groups right now for things that they're posting. And the, the thing is, is if you don't have your social media contacts that are relevant, that want to hear from you on your list, you don't own your ability to communicate with them, right? Your list is the most important thing you possess because you own it and you can do with it what you want, right? No matter what happens, it's yours. If a platform gets shut down, if something, God forbid, were to happen to Young Living, your list is still your list. You can still contact these people, right? You can still work together. So your list also importantly is what is monetized, period, end of story. Your list is what is monetized. These are people who either want to hear from you because they're not your members yet, or they are already your members and they want you to show them how they can get more out of what they've already committed to with Young Living. That's what's monetized. This is a people business, not an oils business. This is a relationship business, not a distributorship business. This is a relationship business. We make relationships with others. They purchase products we recommend. We create relationships with others. They become members and buy those products, right? Your list is where that starts. And you can communicate with your list when you want about what you want and they'll actually see it, right? This isn't posting and hoping. This isn't putting this into a Facebook group and maybe a quarter of people see it, maybe, right? Your list, you send out an email, you know the percentage of people that opened it. You know how well you did and you have that direct line of communication. And then really importantly, your list is an ever-expanding resource for further growth. Look at it like this. If you're a farmer, your list is the soil that you tend and nurture and fertilize for more abundant growth season over season, right? To get more and more out of that resource, right? This is the resource that we create and nurture and build so that we can grow as a business. All right? So this is what your list looks like with Young Living. First, you got your members. Now, you, what you do when you get started working with us at Get Oiling is you load them into your contact manager and Get Oiling by taking the file from your VO of your members. Okay, we've got videos on how to do this, step-by-step instructions. It's all in the back office of Get Oiling, very easy to find. And maybe a quick show of hands, if you're here, have you uploaded successfully from the VO? Let me see, the hands go up all of them. There, there are so many hands. Yeah, so your members are a significant part of your list. These are people who have already bought from you or who have bought because you recommended it, right, more accurately. Another part of your list are your leads. So if you're creating landing pages, right, so if you're creating lead magnet funnels where people opt in on a landing page, give you their name and information in order to get a newsletter or a guide or a video or any kind of information from you, those are your leads. Those are people who have taken a step further from curiosity or maybe liking a post on Facebook and actually coming over and saying, oh, wow, I really want to hear more about what this person has to say and I want them to contact me directly about what they have to say. That's your leads list. All right. So this is what your list looks like. Obviously, if you are a coach or if you are in some other adjacent business to Young Living, if you're a chiropractor, you know, whatever that might be, you would have an additional list here as well that would be your clients and potentially your leads for that as well. And maybe those, those lead groups look pretty similar to you. Anyway. So let's talk about what it means to manage your Young Living members list, right? So this is specifically the file that you're uploading over from your VO to manage the contacts in your business currently. First, you want to make sure that you organize your VO file before uploading. Okay? This is especially important if there are specific things that you want to do. The, I'm really kind of more talking to leaders here, but this is definitely something to consider as you grow moving forward. And what I mean by this is that what you would do is you would apply specific tags to specific parts of your VO file when you upload. So for things like leg name, right? So if, if you are organizing based on a particular leg of your business or as has been taught in a, in a recent previous training on how you can make sure everyone in your organization, no matter how big it is and no matter who enrolled them, has access to you and knows that they can hear from you without you spamming them into eternity, you've got the option to also upload just your new members from that week, apply a tag to them, and then of course, put that campaign on that we talked about in that training. I will be linking that below the recording of this video on YouTube. It is on our YouTube channel. All right. Another thing that you can do to manage your members list aside from segmenting them with tags from your VO is to add notes to those of individual member cards in your contact manager, right? So for every VO file you upload, the members information who is uploaded, everyone has a contact card. You can add notes to those. So let's just say you had a conversation with them. Maybe you did a monthly care call and you set a goal together on a specific outcome they're looking for. You recommended a product. Put that in the notes section of that contact so that when it's time for you to follow up with that person again, you aren't just calling to say, hey, it's about time to place your ER order again. Instead, you're saying, hey, I remember the last time we talked. We talked about you working on this goal and I recommended this product. How is that going for you? Lot more effective that way, right? So add notes so that you're more effective in the way you communicate. Also, directly from your list, from your contact manager in Get Oiling, you can send messages directly to a single member in your downline or to multiples, to an entire leg, however you like, directly via email or text, either from the contact card or the contact manager. And the thing is, guys, when you send email or text directly from your, from your contact manager to your people on their individual contact cards, you can see what emails and texts they open, whether they click links and so on. You can actually see how effective you're being and confirm that people are actually getting information as opposed to hoping they saw a thing you posted, right? Another way you can manage this list is to connect your people with resources from their contact card in Get Oiling. So what this means is, is that when you click on that member's name that's in your contact manager, you can apply a campaign to them if they said they wanted to learn more about a product line and maybe you have Grow Workspace, for instance, and they've got a great class on it and you just want to apply that to them so that they've got it because they asked for it, right? Or maybe they decided that they wanted to start sharing Young Living and building and you have resources inside of a vault in Get Oiling and you can add them to a vault directly from their contact card. Pretty cool, right? All right. Let's talk about strategic member communication. This is another way to manage your list or to, rather, to, to nurture your list so that you can be more effective in how you wield this very important tool for your business. What you can do, and, and this is relating to the tags that we talked about here just a moment ago, you can set promotions for specific legs of your business. So let's just say you're aiming for your next rank and you really want to incentivize maybe a competition in your team, but you want to isolate it to a specific leg, you know, specific members of your team so you can really engage them and get them growing, right? That's a thing that you can do with your list and you can do this with Get Oiling by making sure that you are tagging those legs so that everyone who's in those legs is tagged and you can specifically choose to email or apply a campaign or add to vault or whatever those actions are that you want to perform specifically to those people. This is called segmentation. This means like breaking your list up into segments. When you tag your contacts, your contacts can have many tags, right? And then all you have to do is search for the tag you want and then send the email or apply the campaign or add to vault or whatever that might be. It makes bulk action in your business so much faster and easier and more effective. All right. Another thing that you can do is make sure that you're upholding communication agreements with leaders in your downline if this is something that you're dealing with. So if you have a leader in your downline and they say, look, I would just, I would really prefer that my people not be communicated with, you know, not hear from you, basically. And that's, while that's, that's, that's fine, you agree to it. The way that you uphold that is to, again, apply a tag to that leg of your, of your business and then exclude that tag because you can include or exclude tags when you are searching or filtering your contact manager. Another thing you can do to strategically communicate is to invite your new organization members to opt in for updates or to join your member area. Now again, this is that previous training that I mentioned that'll be linked below this video where we talk about how you can make sure everyone in your team has access. No one gets orphaned, but you're also not just mass sending everything to everyone, which is not really something that we want to do. All right. So this, what this basically means is, is that you can be strategic and say, okay, one time I'm going to apply this too much message campaign to just these people who are brand new so that they have a choice, so that they can say, I want to keep hearing from you, or they can ignore it and not, right? Another strategic communication example, apply follow-up plans to your newly enrolled people to check in after 11 days, make sure they got their kit, right? Or to apply those follow-up plans to your existing members so that you don't drop the ball with care calls. So you don't have kidnappers, right? Keep those lines of communication open, set those expectations for communication early on and use those follow-up plans, which differently from campaigns, these are just prompts, reminders for you so that you know who you need to follow up with today, right? Use those for strategic communication. This is just another way of list management. Now let's talk about your leads. So about managing and mailing specifically your leads list. First, you want to be sure that you're including tags on your landing pages. So if you are offering something up to them that gives them something that they want, right? It's a lead magnet. Make sure that whatever the theme is or the, you know, for, for that lead magnet, you maybe have a tag about it, right? So if it's about babies or if it's about puppies or whatever it is, have babies or puppies be the tag, right? If it is a landing page that is related to a vendor event, write down the name of the vendor event and the date as the tag, right? Be sure to include those tags so you know where your leads come from. And then when you create new content, you broadcast that out to your leads. So if you make a new blog post, make a new video on YouTube, you make a new social post on your profile or on a page in social media, you can actually link that in this email or text to send people over to consume that information. That's who you send this stuff to. For your leads, you send them the new information that you create that's interesting to them. And so where you have special interest information, you can make sure it gets to the right leads by using tags. So the next time you create something that's for moms of young babies, you know that the people who opt in for the, you know, the peaceful infant rollerball recipe that you gave away as a lead magnet, the people who opted into that are going to be interested in the blog posts that you wrote about managing toddler tantrums, right? So send that special interest information that you create or curate to the people who are most interested based on the tags that have been applied to them when they opt in. You can also similarly apply follow-up plans to your specific lead types. Don't just rely on your automations, guys. If somebody opts into a landing page that you've created that offers a lead magnet, send a personal email to them. If you're not getting 20 leads a day, you can do this, right? If you're getting more than 20 leads a day, this might get a little bit, you know, it might be a little time-consuming and you might, the more leads you get per day, want to lean a little bit more into automation. But most of us aren't getting that many. We are really working in a quality over quantity situation here, so make the most of it. If somebody opts in and they're interested, build that relationship and have a follow-up plan that you apply to your new leads just to make sure that you're not dropping the ball with them either. And importantly, if you're tagging, then you can actually have folks who are, you know, people that you met at a vendor event that you need to have a follow-up plan in place for to make sure you get them the information that you promised. Or if you had a drawing or something like that, you can connect them with that information. If there are Facebook connection and you want to remind yourself in 48 hours to touch back so you don't feel like you're hounding them and you've allowed enough space there, right? You can add a follow-up plan that does that for you. You can also, if these are leads who have maybe expressed an interest in Young Living and maybe you've shared resources, a video or some other kind of information that actually shows and shares and explains Young Living for you, but you want to make sure that you have done the right follow-up, you can have a follow-up plan for that as well. Again, that's management of your list. Really importantly, again, just to reiterate, you own this list, right? And you can say what you want, when you want to this list. Obviously, the caveat here being where you see the terms like, I don't know, CBD, for instance, those are typically just as, as policed by email inbox servers or maybe not to the same degree that maybe they are on Facebook right now. But, but definitely, you know, get, get creative, right? I think, shout out to Tanya. I saw her post in the group the other day. She, she went C E E B E E D E E to spell it out phonetically. Because again, you, you do want to be, you know, cognizant of those things. But for the most part, guys, you can say what you want to say, when you want to say it. And these are the people that you can email, text, reach out to because you can, because they are in your business or because they have specifically said, I want to keep hearing from you. I like what you have to say. All right. So this is just to kind of touch back on that previous training that I've, I've alluded to a couple of times here. Guys, there's a lot of ways for you to grow this list, right? For you to get more leads on this list that can then grow the member side of this list. First, if you've got a link page, guys, and if, and if you have Linktree, you don't need it. We have a page template in Get Oiling that does this for you, that works the same way. And so then you just take that page and you link to it in your Instagram bio. So when you create new content, you take a photo or, you know, have a pretty picture about your blog content and say, link in bio or click the blog link in bio to go see my latest blog post, right? You can also put a pretty picture on Pinterest and blog post that. Do make sure that it's not stock YL photos or that YL is not a term that you use on Pinterest specifically. Make sure this is more personal brand content. Link in YouTube description. Guys, you should be making YouTube videos, not about Young Living specifically. I mean, sure, every now and then maybe do a review of a product, but make interesting content for the people that you want to attract. And then in the description, let them know, hey, if you want to hear more from me, obviously hit subscribe. But there's also a link in the comments that'll get you my guide to X, Y, Z, right? That'll get you in touch with me so we can get on a call. That'll show you my latest blog post where I talk about X, Y, Z, right? These are all ways that you grow your list and you move people from all over the world toward the way that you own and can communicate with them through. You could also link in a Twitter post to your landing page, your homepage or your blog post. You can blog directly on LinkedIn and link off to a landing page, homepage or your blog post. And then you could also do this in Snapchat as well. So guys, utilize social platforms to get people onto your list because the platforms that you go out and you mostly interact on are owned by entities that are not friendly to what we do, period, end of story, at the end of the day. So what you want to do, grow this list to get as many people as possible from these platforms onto this one because we support what you do and you own the means of communication. You bring your list here and we help you get your word out. Okay? So I want you to make sure that you are shifting your goal toward building that list of those aligned and interested leads so that you can serve them with the information that helps them, informs them, entertains, uplifts and empowers them and provide opportunities for them to move onto that list and then move closer to having that one-on-one call with you so that you can help them even more by connecting them to Young Living and how you know how to use these products, right? And just again, as a recap from that training video, this is all about content marketing, you guys. Your list is all about content marketing. You've got your content that goes out to social posts. You've got your content that you send back to people who have signed up, right? People opt in through a funnel. They get onto your list. Your list provides those opportunities to get on a one-on-one with you where you can then sign them up as your new member. All right? Really important that we make this shift. You are internet marketers. You are content marketers if we're doing this, right? Right? We are putting ourselves out there, our meaning, our purpose to the world and those who are in alignment with it show up. And they do. Maybe a quick show of hands. How many of you are generating leads online right now? I know a lot of you are in Go For Gold and you are getting, yeah, oh my gosh, look at these hands. You're, you're seeing this stuff happen. And I promise you, like, it's, the hurdle in our mind that stands between us in this process is far bigger than any technical reality you have to conquer to get this done. It really is simple if we follow the step-by-step. All right. So if you want to learn how to create funnels, you can go to getoiling.com/GetLeads. We do teach you how to create a funnel, which is the link ultimately that you would be sharing in your content and in your blog posts. And of course, if you are not a part of Go For Gold, you can go to getoiling.com/goforgold and the coupon code NEWGGMEMBER, all one word, is still valid. You can use that as well. So now I want to get over and talk about our new feature announcements and Get Oiling to help you manage your list. All right. So let's talk about these new features in your contact manager. You can now merge your contacts and we're going to talk about what this means and Greg is going to explain this in a way that only he can. You can now also bulk delete your contacts, which was a thing that you used to have to get in touch with us directly to do. So we're going to show you how you can do that. And now you can resend messages. So this is email and text to your contacts. One caveat, if you got an image attached to it, it's not going to attach that automatically. But if somebody says, oh, hey, I never got that email, you can just go into their contact card and hit resend on the message. So easy. Oh my goodness. So Greg is going to show us how we do these things. And how many of you guys are excited to see this?
All right.
I know I am.
Yes, team. I'm hearing that.
Awesome. Let me get my, can you make me co-host? It looks like I can't share my screen.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that.
And if my audio sounds funny, let me know. I've been having some troubles and I'm on a cell phone connection right now, so hopefully this will work.
Seems to be working now. Are you co-host? Is that working? Yeah.
Oh, let me see. Yes. Okay. Looks like it's letting me do it. So let's share away here. All right. Okay. So first up is the contact merge. So here we have a dashboard and, you know, just for a familiar starting place, I have a bunch of contacts in my test contact database here that are all kind of named similarly. So let's say this does happen from time to time. For whatever reason, you'll end up with multiple contacts in your database. You know, maybe they just signed up under a different email address, so it's lead, and then they joined Young Living. And now you've got two contacts in there. They had a different email. So anyway, you want to have to merge them. So what you do, and you can merge two contacts at a time right now. All you have to do really is select the two of them. So I'm gonna, I'm going to check these two here and just, and then go up to the actions menu and there's now a merge contacts link. If this doesn't show up, then you have either too many selected or too few selected. So like if I go uncheck this, the merge doesn't show. So like if I go uncheck this, the merge doesn't show. So be sure that you have the two selected here and then your merge contacts is going to show up here. So click on this. It'll walk you through a process here of merging. Now you do have to choose which ones like your primary contact. Essentially what that means is that's like the basis of all the contact information that you start with. And it does actually do its best to merge. So you'll see here that there's two different email addresses on the, uh, in these two accounts. And, um, but this one has a phone number. This one doesn't. This one has an address. This one doesn't. And the tags are of course a little bit different. So, uh, basically choose the primary contact that you want to be. You can do a preview. On the next screen, it does actually let you, uh, it brings you to essentially like what's an edit contact screen. And you can preview this and make changes if you want to. It does, uh, it does merge the tags. It'll put all the tags in here. If the contact information, uh, didn't exist in your main contact, but it did exist in your secondary contact, it will copy that over for you. So you don't have to do that. But then anything that doesn't show up, or can't be copied over because there's only one field for it, it shows up down here in background information. And you can edit that and change it however you want to. Maybe you just delete it. I don't know. But it's there for your records. It's just sort of attaches it to the top so that you have that for your information later. Just in case it's got the data on there and all of the fields that happened to not be able to be transferred over. So now if I click merge, then it does its magic behind the scenes and then it will, uh, merge it and take you to the remaining contact. So you can see it's all here. The other contact is gone now. You don't have to, you know, that's not going to be there anymore. Automatically deletes that other one. And now some of the other cool things that it does, and this was like, uh, a drawback of the old manual merge. It will merge everything else, um, your to-dos, your past actions, um, campaigns, vaults, files. So those will all like merge into, you know, so from your both contacts, essentially they'll all show up in here. So you'll have your history of both. Previously, if you had activity in one and activity in the other, and you manually merged them, they wouldn't come together. So now this is, I think, really awesome. It's been, this has been a huge request, uh, from people as well. So hopefully this will be helpful for you. Um, let us know if you have any feedback on this.
We got questions on this.
Fair.
All right. Will it, uh, will it merge past actions and keep connections when you do the contact merge?
I'm not sure what you mean by connections, but yeah, it merges the past actions. So anything here, it will merge both contacts and kind of smoosh them together into one big list. But, um, I'm not sure about connections. What exactly that means now, i- if you're talking about maybe member area, yeah, it'll keep you in those vaults. It does keep the password from your main contact. Whatever the primary contact, or it moves it over if it didn't have the password. So it tries to do its best to sort that out. Might end up having to do a password reset, but, um, yeah. All right. Does it duplicate past actions if we had done a group email that? No, it, well, it would actually, yeah, if they happen to have both. If it happened to go to both, it would duplicate the past actions because it did actually send two emails. It's kind of a reflection of what actually was happened, what happened there. Cool. So that's, that's the merge. And we can certainly, um, cover it more if you've got more questions. But next up is the bulk delete. This one, often what happens is, um, an import goes wrong. Suddenly you've got this database, this contact manager full of blank names or something else happens and you've got duplicates or you want to delete a leg or whatever the case might be. What you can do there, you can, you know, unlike the merge, it only works with two. You can, uh, filter or select as many as you want to. So basically the, it starts with the same, uh, filter or select process that you have now. So, I mean, you can select individual contacts if you want to merge or delete them. Or you can filter them down. If you were like, okay, I need to get rid of everybody who's tagged with whatever this tag is. You can go ahead and do that. That'll, I guess there's only one person here. In this case, I'm just going to select two of them and then, uh, under the actions menu, sort of this bulk operations area here, this ad campaign follow-up plan, bulk or tags. If you do this, now there's a new little bulk delete link at the bottom. And just go ahead and click that. And it'll, you know, give you a warning. This is going to permanently delete two contacts. You can't undo this because it's a big operation because it's, you know, kind of an important thing. And, um, it does require that you re-enter your password, your GetOiling password in there in order to complete the delete. Because, you know, if you leave your computer open and, you know, somebody wanders by and they're like, huh, I'm going to delete all your contacts or something. If they would be like that, they at least have to have your password. So, um, I'll demo at this. I've been here. So get that in there. This will actually delete that. It gives you one more confirmation. You hit okay. And then now on, it's going to go out and bulk delete. Shows they're deleted. They're gone from the list. They were the top two from the list. So they're no longer here. So that's super exciting. That one has been, um, you know, people have had to email in, you've had to email in when you've ever had that situation arise. And now you can kind of take care of that on your own. Um, there's a lot of people working at, uh, you know, in the middle of the night or during hours when we're maybe not available. So this will help you clean that up kind of whenever you want to, and you don't have to worry about contacting us, which is great. Yeah. So that's, that's exciting too. So the resend now is the next, uh, unless anyone had any questions on that. I don't see any.
Greg, I have, Greg?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a clarification question, just to make sure we keep it with this bulk delete that you're talking about. If somebody bulk deletes and they enter their password and they confirm that they want to bulk delete those, and then they realize they made a mistake, can they contact us and we can recover them? Or it is a permanent action?
Uh, it's a, it's a primitive action. It does delete them out of the database because there's merging and all sorts of stuff. They're not merging, but yeah, it does delete them out of there. It cleans out like everything if they had comments in there. Um, you know, in the member area, it deletes kind of all of that out. So, yeah.
So they should be super sure they want to delete everything.
Yep, yep. And certainly review the list very carefully before you go through that whole process. So, yeah. Cool. Uh, let's see. Next up here, we've got the resend email, which is awesome. I think I've got a contact here that's got some data in there that I can use. And click on here. Basically you just find a contact, um, typical, well, let me back up. So typically the scenario here is like, hey, I didn't get that email or, uh, something went wrong. Or maybe, uh, maybe the other situation is they had a bad email address. They signed up for a landing page. They typo'd it and, and left off the m on gmail.com or whatever, and it, the email bounces or any number of reasons. And you're like, hey, I want to resend that email. So now, um, just find the contact in the contact manager and scroll down to, uh, any of these that are an email or a text. Other actions, you know, like notes and some of these opt-in and out and all that aren't going to, um, it won't let you resend those because they're obviously not messages. But if I find a, actually, so let me go over here. So this one is a good one. So this one I think is relatively long. It's a lengthy email that shows it was delivered some time ago. Now there's a resend email link or button at the bottom. So what you do is you click that and it just opens, it basically pre-fills the email, um, screen for you so you can send a new one, uh, which means that you can edit it beforehand. Like if you're like, hey, here's that email. Um, I meant to send or whatever. You can put that on. You can edit it before you send it and then hit send. So it's a really simple, you know, a couple of clicks operation. Even if you don't want to edit it, you don't have to. But it does allow you that opportunity, um, to do so. But then it'll resend it and that'll add a new past action showing that you resent it. The same is true of texts. Um, if you find a text message in there somewhere, you can, like this one here, it'll have a resend on the bottom. I hit resend and it'll, it'll pull it up there. So the, uh, yeah, anyway, so that's the, that's that feature. I think that one's an exciting one. We've had a lot of requests for that. Um, and that's, uh, yeah, that's available now. Basically you just got to go find it and click it and enjoy these new things. So, and there is one other small change that's, um, not really possible to demo easily. But, um, we've had a lot of feedback about, um, how the new lead emails are the subject line. So right now, if somebody registers on a landing page for you or on your website, what it's going to do, you know, let's say we're viewing this, whatever it might be. They sign up, boom. You get an email now that says new lead from your GetOiling system, or at least you used to. And then it had like, in brackets, it had the name of the page. I think this was seven-day training in this case, uh, would be the example. We've changed that now. So it doesn't say new lead anymore. It just, uh, it just will say the name of the landing page, in this case, seven-day training. Instead of that, on the subject line, because that way, uh, it allows you to re, uh, reply more easily. And then when you click reply in your email client, because you've got a copy in your email, you can click reply and then their subject line looks a lot better to them. It'll say something like, you know, how email says R E colon and then whatever the subject line. It'll do that, um, which then I think increases opening. We've had a lot of people being confused about like, what is this new lead? What does this mean? Am I a lead? Who's the lead? So it's just very, hopefully this will streamline things, but that's, um, just a note, you know, in case you've had anything set up that was recognizing that. The format did change, um, late last night about that, but, um, fourth little bonus improvement here. So.
Awesome. All right. So there was a question from Suzanne, just to clarify, bulk delete is found in actions?
Yes. Let me walk through that one more time. Um, filter or select that. Uh, I don't know which ones I have selected. So I'll be selecting all. So if you like, select or filter the ones that you want to delete. Under actions, there's this ad campaign. It's basically kind of the bulk operations. I may, you know, that might get renamed at some point, but you click that and then, um, click bulk delete down here on the bottom. Next to export CSV, um, click bulk delete and then it'll walk you through that process of deleting those contacts.
And the one thing that I want to point out too, just because some people get so confused about this is, is that, um, there are two sections when you pull that down. There's two sections there. There's selected contacts on the top and then there's all contacts. So you want to make sure that when you are doing these actions, that you are, um, going underneath the correct area there. So that way you're not, you know, bulk deleting. And then as well as when you actually do, um, do that, just verify on the top that it says, um, do this action to this many contacts. So Greg, if you want to, um, do the ad campaign follow, or whatever to the, um, to selected that you have, um, and show them. Yeah. So then it shows right there to two contacts. So just, you know, verify, being able to verify, um, and those that with how many contacts that you are trying to do.
Yeah. And, and actually, if you do have some, so further on that, if you have no contacts selected, um, then there is only one section. So that second section shows up when you start to select contacts. And if you do, or you come down here and click all, it does ask you to confirm saying, are you sure you want to do, you know, to mail all 292 contacts or whatever instead of the two? So, um, just a little warning there. Cool. Any more questions here? Let's see.
We got a lot of them. I don't think there are a whole lot that are specific to this. So, um, this is, I mean, let me see if any more just came in. Uh, yeah, I think these are all, all, uh, not necessarily related to the updates. So we got a couple of questions around sort of like a homepage. So Tina says that she just set up her account and she's curious whether people can see a homepage of sorts that includes the top menu bar, or if they only get to that by subscribing. Well, that sounds like Tina is that you may have a, uh, landing page enabled on your GetOiling, um, theme homepage, right? Like that's what you get when you sign up. It's going to be getoiling.com forward slash whatever the name is that you choose or yourname.com or whatever custom domain you have us set up for you. There is an option to actually have a landing page that, um, that gates people from being able to go anywhere until they give their information. You could choose to use that. That's right here. Greg's showing it. Customize my site. Um, you could also remove that. Now, when that's removed, that does, uh, that does enable the viewability of a sort of menu on the homepage though, right? On our themes.
Yep. If it's set to default or none, so then it will not show on that landing page first. So if you're trying to set up a homepage that's more of a, like a traditional website where it's got, you know, multiple pages or maybe it's just one big page and you have a menu on top, then, um, you probably don't want the landing page turned on because the, the page builder does allow you to do the little pop-up lead capture, which a lot of people like. So, um, if you're seeing that, you don't want to come under customize my site and take the landing page off, change it back to this default option here. And then that should take care of it. So, um, let us know if that doesn't help.
So two more menu questions. Uh, one is, uh, from Suzanne. Hello. She said, um, could you do something on the menu function? I'm trying unsuccessfully to change mine. On my homepage is learn, but I can't see that on the changing menu part. How do I get to the learn off? So I've only got site. So I think she may have two menu items, um, on her custom menu. This is definitely going to be on, on the menu, uh, custom menu feature.
Yeah. So there's actually two parts of that. The learn menu, um, well, first of all, the, all of the built-in themes, if you're using one of the built-in website themes here as your homepage, there's a learn menu that shows up automatically for them. It's added to your menu. Um, and it's customized for that theme because every theme has some, you know, slightly different sections. And that's, that learn menu is something that you can't edit the contents of. However, also on this customize my site page, there are options here to show the learn more menu on the built-in or button and menu, um, on those built-in themes. So there's like, um, that's something you can control as well. So Suzanne, that probably sounds what's going on there. You want to go to customize my site and then uncheck these two boxes or at least the bottom one here, the learn menu, and then save and see if that takes care of it for you. Otherwise, in the site menu, uh, a quick tutorial on that. So under my site settings, if you want to create a custom menu for your site, and I'll just view it. I don't know what's all on this one. I think this is maybe a built-in. Yeah, this is one of the built-in themes. Um, and it does actually have a customized menu right now because this is not the standard menu. So I can show you how that, what that looks like. So it's under, again, under my site settings and then site menu. And here's a, I guess a, what do you want to call? It listed straight down versus, whoops. Versus when you're looking in here, it kind of goes across, uh, across the top. So you can see here, like, here's a menu header called home, which has one item and it called home. Um, and again, a demo site to some of this stuff might be kind of silly, but then we have two more menu headers. But basically with the menus, you can, um, you can add more items to them or you can remove them. Like if I want to remove this login link, which doesn't really make any sense because it doesn't go anywhere right now. Let's say I want to add a new menu header. So let's pick a new menu header called, uh, my new header. And then, um, you can make it linkable if you want to, or you can just have it a pulldown menu. So I'm going to make this new header and then let's say I want to put a website theme in there. Which would be, it's a built-in website theme. Like, say I want to have my, I'll just say, I guess we already have helpy home. So maybe I'll do makeup, um, and then I'll go down here and choose makeup, done, and then save. Actually, I put it in the wrong spot. I need to put this under the menu header, my new header. That's why I want to put it for the purpose of this demo. So now I'm going to save and then come back over to my page and reload. And then we'll see here now that this is updated where we would now have that learn, the login is gone, but now you have this new header with a makeup item in there. And if I click it, it'll allow you, it'll switch over to that makeup theme, um, on that specific page. So the menu does allow you to do some pretty cool things, like, you know, having all of the themes on the website, or at least the ones you want to. And you don't have to have those as your homepage either. Another cool trick here is if we have a homepage, uh, like this one is, I, let's say if we, if we add a website page, which is how I got that in the first place.
By the way, Wendy Poole, this is answering your question. If you have a custom page, this is how you make it your website homepage.
Fantastic. Yeah. So, uh, under website, when you're adding a website page, give it a label. Pick one of the pages and then make sure you check this box. This is make this the main page for my, for my website. And then I'll hit, uh, done and save. And let me go back a page because, and then I, I need to refresh here. And now this new page that I selected, uh, is going to be the homepage of the site. So it's that easy. I'll, I'll uncheck this box here to make the main page for your website. Basically, if you don't have a menu item that says make this the main page for your website, one of the built-in themes is going to show up for you. So that's the, the short version of that. Now we got a lot of other questions, so we'll keep moving on here.
All right. Can you show how one excludes a tag? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Amanda.
Oh, um, the one thing though too about that is, is that, um, once you change the, um, menu header and you start choosing, uh, which one will be on there, it does, um, disable the website theme of choice, if that makes sense, you know, because you, we have the option to, um, to have one of our custom website themes as your homepage and then being able to change between them. But once you start, um, creating your own, um, header, menu header, um, that does disable this part. So then you won't be able to choose those themes anymore.
Yeah. You have to do that by adding, you have to, if you want those themes, you can still add them to your menu. They just don't show up by default. You'd have to go in here and add a new, uh, built-in website theme, choose which ones you wanted and then add them to the menu. All right. Excluding, Renee asks, how, uh, can you show how one excludes a tag when, when sorting, um, maybe filtering? Maybe you mean filtering there? So I'll show you that here. Let me uncheck these two. So to exclude a tag, it's pretty simple on the filters box here, um, you know, go to your contact manager, click on filters. There's an exclude tags. Um, so if you want to have everyone who's, um, you know, you can exclude multiple tags if you want to. We'll see it went from 292 down to 284. So we excluded some of those people. So pretty straightforward. You can combine the two. If you have tags you do want, like I want everyone on the seven-day training who are not business builders, for example, you can do that. Yeah. So. Awesome.
Yeah. And an example of, of when you would use something like that, like was mentioned before, which if you like, tag a leg of your team because their leader doesn't want you to communicate with their people, this is where you would tag your members and then exclude tag the members who are in that leg.
Yes.
All right. Debbie said, I completed setup of my member area and notified and invited all of my members to join. Is there a way I can see if they logged in and set themselves up?
That should be showing up in your recent activity on your dashboard. See like here, these say visited member area, however, many days ago, you should see that there as well as it's going to show up in the daily activity email. And then, yeah, it should be also showing up here. If you want to check on a specific person, you can do that, too. Like if you pull up, go under here, find a contact and scroll down and hit the show activity button. It'll show you what they've been doing. And one of the options is visited a member area. So you can see that in the list if you want to. So you can like look on one person.
All right. Stacy says newbie here. Hi, welcome. When you say bring in one of your legs and you have personal enrolled on that leg that you've that you have already brought in to get oiling, meaning I assume in your contact manager. When we put the tag on the leg being brought in there on like number one, will it update those personally enrolled members that they are personally enrolled and like number one? So I mean, if you, I think what you you're saying here is that you have maybe manually added your personals to your good oiling potentially. If the contact information like phone number and email are the same, there is a good chance that they will merge together on an upload. Is that right, Greg?
Yeah, if the member number or the, yeah, if your file has a member number, it'll try to merge it by member number. If not, it would try to merge it by email address. And if not, now you can use the new merge feature and merge it yourself.
Exactly, exactly. But once you do have, and guys, the the thing that you want to be doing is not manually adding your members, but use your VO because we don't just keep track and log in your member number into the system. We import the genealogical structure so that you can actually go to a leg builder view of your team and select who you want to contact by clicking this button Greg is showing us here. And you can actually see who is where, right? And and choose to tag a leg this way. This is a great way to tag your legs, by the way, is to have them imported and then just click that person and you perform all those actions on them and everyone in their downline, that little box down there. So this is where you can add a tag to all of them. And then, of course, if this is someone who, you know, doesn't want you reaching out to their team, then you always put their tag in the exclude when you send out a broadcast, right? And if this is taking place in multiple parts of your team, then that's going to be the case, too. All right. So so yeah, definitely err on the side of using the VO upload because it's going to keep all the settings that you've created and just keep that contact file up to date. All right. Is there a way to send a broadcast message or email to a certain leg? Yes, that is literally what Greg just showed you here. You select the leg, top of the leg, or you know, if you want to go down into a leg and part of a leg there, then you would just choose the mail action or the text action. All right. How do you add tags to landing pages is the next question. Oh, there you go. Also mailed down. Yeah.
You do have to check that box for it to go through the whole downline.
Perfect. All right. That's so powerful. Yeah. So guys, this is, this is why you want to use your VO to get your your while contacts here because there's a lot of powerful features you can take advantage of. All right. So how do you add tags to landing pages is the next question from Allison. She also asked, I only have one landing page. Can you explain how or why I would want more? I just learned that you could make a landing page for an email course using grow campaigns, but not sure how to put that into practice. So while Greg shows us how to put a tag on a landing page, I'll explain why you would want to have more than one. So if you think about your your interests and the things that you could talk about, they're they're generally broader than just Young Living, right? You're going to be getting leads for bigger reasons than just you are a distributor of Young Living, right? So that's where your multiple landing pages would come into play. You also have different functions that they would perform for you. A really popular function for this landing page feature, because you can use it in something called kiosk mode, is for you to use this at a vendor event so that you can automatically have tags applied to the people who opt into it. So instead of getting like a, you know, a long legal pad sheet of names and emails that you got to go and like keep up with and or stack up in the corner or like manually enter into your your contact management system or never follow up with, you know, any of that spectrum. You can now have them receive campaigns automatically. You can have them tagged. You can put follow up plans on so that you know you aren't dropping the ball. So how do we add a tag to a landing page?
Yeah. So when you're editing or creating a landing page, it's under the settings button, go to page settings. And then you can just pick your tags that you want to add or add a new tag. And then whenever somebody registers, after you've got this saved and set up, whenever somebody registers on this, it'll automatically add them with the tag or tags that you've chosen here as well as put them on whatever campaign that you would like to have them as well. And there's a question by Greta here down a ways that says, I noticed under customize my site on the landing page section, it says kiosk and that returns to the landing page after they register. Is there a way to change this so that they go somewhere else after they register? Yes. So first of all, you wouldn't use the kiosk mode. You do use, just use the landing page link with the view link. You can also choose here in the same settings box, you can choose whether they go to your homepage after they register or send them to any arbitrary link on the internet that you want to, whether it's a PDF download or some other website or your own website or a page or member, you know, there's any any number of places that you can send people after that. And the kiosk mode link that she was talking about is back on the landing page list here. There is kiosk that opens it up in a mode that is great for vendor events because you can, once somebody registers, it just shows the same landing page again. And basically, you know, it's really great for hey, register for this drawing for this free giveaway. It's also under this customize my site here, which is, I think, what she was talking about. If you click kiosk, then what that does is the same thing. It just kind of recirculates the same landing page. Preview would be exactly what you'd want to do if you want to actually test it out.
And Allison's asking how to get people to that landing page so that they can opt in, sort of sending them the link directly. So sending the link directly is is certainly a valid way to do it, but this is where we're going back to earlier in the training where I mentioned content. Your landing page should be linked to your content. So you write a blog post about a recipe and you say, hey, if you loved this, you're really going to love this thing over here. Click this link and it goes to your landing page and then that person can become your lead. You can do the same thing on YouTube. You could do the same thing on any social media platform. A landing page is really a way for people who find your content on social media to stand up, put their hand up and say, I want to hear more from you. Please continue being in contact with me directly. And so that's the whole point there. So your content is how people find landing pages. And of course, if you want to use your landing pages as maybe a simplified strategic way to move existing members, if you have a large organization into your private member area, if you're transitioning off of Facebook, for instance, then you could send that landing page just directly to your people or post that in existing Facebook groups so that they see a clear path to getting this other thing that you want to give them. All right. She also had a question back to the legs. I had two members this month imported them to to GO to get oiling. Just got the confirmation today of the move to a different sponsor or leg. Do I need to manually change that? Nope. Upload from your VO, it'll be reflected there. You always want to use your VO upload because it's going to show you the most accurate representation of exactly what your genealogical business structure looks like with Young Living. That's the most important thing. And the other thing it'll do as well is it'll keep things updated, you know? So if somebody goes inactive, then you know, this is going to be reflected. If they're inactive for a long time, like basically your permission to stay in contact is going to be based on a number of factors, one of which is, are they still your member? You still do own that list, to be fair. But 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 yeah, all of that kind of updating stuff needs to be brought over consistently. I would do this once a week or more if you have a really rapidly growing large team. All right. Can you import a website and its content into a vault for members? I'm not sure that I'm not sure that I truly get what the vault is yet, but I'm just getting into it. So Tina, if you go to get oiling.com forward slash member training, that is a complete explanation, breakdown and instruction on what our member area and vaults are, online classes, all that kind of stuff, and how you can use them. You can bring in information from a website, but it's going to be a little bit more copy pasty than anything else. You're going to want to reformat it to make it look nice. I screenshot, import images, whatever it is that you'd like to do. But you can take that information and bring it into a vault. If you want information on how to grow your your member area to maybe take it off of Facebook or make it a more duplicable resource for your team. Just last week or a couple of weeks ago, I forget, we do so many of these. We did a training on taking your member area off of Facebook. If you go to youtube.com forward slash get oiling, it's there. It is a video or two behind this one. Highly recommend that you check that one out as well to give you a framework and sort of a planning document to show you how to strategically go about setting up a member area that isn't just there because it's there, right? But it's there because it serves a really important strategic purpose. All right, we had an email campaign question. Oh, I was reading this a bit earlier. So if you are here and you don't have your name entered, would really love to be able to help you further, but this says anonymous attendee. So she's here, she says, I'm really struggling with the email campaigns. I would like to be able to see what I am sending as my user because I don't know what they are getting and campaigns are getting started and sending out emails that I didn't intend, but I'm still getting charged for them. I had a class yesterday and people had registered for the event and then said they couldn't register for an account. I had to reset their passwords individually, not sure that they got an email telling them where to go to set up their account. Sorry if this sounds confusing. Okay. So this, the latter part of that sounds like you may have set them up with access to a vault. And where that's the case, if you add them to a vault directly or via landing page or whatever, and they did not see the email, first make sure they check their junk mail, just to be sure. And then you just give them the link to where they should be going and there is a place for them to reset their password. So you don't have to do it. Now, that's if we're talking about vaults and I'm not really clear. So hopefully that does answer that part. If you want to see what your people see when you send a campaign, you can simply create a contact that is yourself and your contact manager and then apply that campaign to you. And if you want to receive it more quickly, you could put them all to day zero in the campaign so that they all, all of the emails sent to you right away or all of the texts sent to you right away. And or, you know, if, you know, just want to wait a week or however long the campaign is, you could do it that way. But the easiest thing to do, of course, is to send it to yourself. So you could see exactly what it looks like. And yeah, if you want to come back and clarify, let us know who you are because we're not really sure who you are and we want to help. I think that you were talking about your vaults, though, and inviting them to the vault for a class. And again, if you are adding someone, you're adding their contact, make sure that they're using the email address that you have on file for them in your contact file that you have added to that vault and they can go back and use that same one to reset their own password. And you don't have to be part of that transaction. Just make sure they're using the right information. All right. Cheryl says, when I do a Zoom call and want to resend the email just before the call, where do I find the list of those I sent for the initial Zoom email? So if you have not tagged a group of people, so let's just say, for instance, you are going to do kind of a live webinar style thing where people register to be able to attend, then you would create a landing page that gives the details about, you know, at this date and this time, we're going to talk about XYZ. If you want to get notified, put your name and email in here. That's one way that you could do it. Then, of course, on that landing page, you'd have a tag and that would be the quickest, easiest way, you know, webinar X date, you know, class X date, and then you could search for that in your contacts and then send or schedule emails or campaigns to go out from there. But the other way, if you didn't do that pre work, if you go to messages under contacts over here on the screen. Greg, if it's possible for you to show us that, if you hit messages over in the column here, yep. That's going to show you the, it's going to show you the messages that you sent recently. Is there a way, Greg, for us to ascertain like, you know, who those people were so that that could, the the same people could have that that message sent to them?
Yeah, you can actually click, the name is clickable and this is a demo account, but this one has, I guess, multiple contacts of the same name. But you can click on that. Yeah, cloning myself, my new experiment. No. But yeah, you can just click on this. If it gets too big, it'll say like 27 contacts or 100 contacts or whatever there and you can just click on that.
Perfect. And so when you click that, you could then send another email or schedule another email?
Yeah, once you've got that list of people, you can, you know, the actions button works, you can resend to that group.
Perfect.
Yeah. And the other thing is if they came in through a campaign, you know, if you don't have a tag, but they have a campaign, if you click on contact settings and then campaigns, this number under the contacts column is actually clickable. So you can see everyone who's on that campaign. So if you made a new campaign just for an event or something, you could click on that and then I'll take you to the list of people who are on that campaign and then you can mail them that way. So there's kind of a number of different ways you can probably reverse engineer what what happened there with that original email.
Perfect. All right, Allison, another question. So how would this work with a campaign? I put a new member in the member campaign to tag, let's see, to a contact with no email, but not the imported from Young Living. I've since fixed the email, but not sure if I need to delete the campaign or click on the circle arrow. Okay, so if she created a contact and added a campaign where there was not an email address attached, once a new, once that is, once that contact file is updated with a new email address, would she need to reapply the campaign or would the campaign restart? Like, how how would that work? If a campaign doesn't reply to a contact without an email?
Yeah, it would just pick up kind of where it would be. So like, let's say they missed, this person missed the first two emails. It would start sending email three and four and so on. You would have to go back and use that little circle arrow symbol that you mentioned, or just delete the campaign and then add or not delete it, but remove it from that contact and then re-add it to that contact. Either way, it would work. You want to restart it.
Yeah, you would. Yeah. So maybe remove it from the contact and then re-add it. All right. Faye is asking, do we have access to the seven day training email series for our builders? If you see a campaign from Get Oiling in your account, you have the option under actions over here to, or actually that we're on landing pages right now, but there is a, there we go. So when you look at campaigns, there's a little pencil icon and then there's a little two page icon. You can duplicate any of the campaigns you see. The seven day training marketing 101 is one that I don't know that it's not live on our site anymore. I don't think we're.
No, that's an old one. Yeah.
Yeah. Wow, that's, that's, that's one that I, gosh, I wrote that in like 2017. All right. So yeah, so I don't think you have access to it. But for your builders, highly recommend you get them plugged into these weekly work sessions. Highly, highly recommend you get them into Go for Gold. And and really just get into the the habit of outsourcing education so that you can do more of the things that move the needle for you. And the things that don't really move the needle for you basically include wearing all the hats. Like, I feel like that's such a pitfall of entrepreneurs, period. Like, we feel like we have to do everything all the time. We're so uncomfortable with like getting somebody else to do things that we could do ourselves. But really, guys, like plug them into stuff that's already out there. It doesn't have to come from you. It doesn't have to have your name on it. And we're here to help you grow your people. All right. But but if you see anything that is in your account that it that we gave you, all you got to do is hit that little duplicate button and you can make it your own, whatever it is. Highly recommend you do that with like, like new member campaigns, for instance, to personalize them with your own stories. All right. Cornelia asks, I just sent out emails to team members that I'm not in contact with yet, but they're obviously not supported. A lady wrote back and I was confused about the email address that she received my email from. This showed up in her email, which she clicked today. I didn't get the rest of your question. But she got the, so if you don't have your own email domain or your own domain with an email address set up on it, we are sending emails on your behalf that is that are replied to the email address you set up your account with. So if you have a Gmail account, our system doesn't send from your Gmail account. Our system sends from this manual emails at will email.com account unless you have set up your own custom domain email address either through us or somewhere else. So so yeah, if you want this to come through, like if you have a custom domain, for example, like if you are cornelia, your last name.com and you wanted your, you know, email to be hello at cornelia, your last name.com, that email would not be what shows up for her, this manual emails. It would be the one that is your custom one. Okay, Marie, I have not yet branded my good oiling website to me. It's still the built in good oiling website. In the back office under customize my site for Facebook, I've put in the link to my Facebook lead group that I hope they will join rather than a business page. And so at the bottom of the homepage where it says like Marie on Facebook, the link takes them to my Facebook lead group instead of a business page, which is what someone would actually like in Facebook lingo. Does this sound like an okay way to go? Yes, absolutely, but don't count on that as being the way people find their way to your lead group. It is a better place to point people at the end of the day, though. I mean, you can get, you could get five million likes on a Facebook page, a business page, and you could post something and 10 people would see it unless you pay Facebook. And then they might show it to maybe 10 times more people, depending on how much and how long you want to pay them for it. So, you know, definitely have the things be more actionable and related to things that they can interact with and you can interact with directly. And make sure that you're using calls to action. If you want people to follow you on Facebook, then write it in the text of your blog posts at the bottom. If you want them to go to your lead group on Facebook, write it at the bottom. If you want them to go to your lead group on Facebook, write it at the bottom and say, I have created a group of blank that helps you get blank. Click here now to join, right? You want to lean on that kind of specific language and not just on the fact that there's a link there. But I do, I do support that. I don't think that having a business page is the right move for 90% of Young Living distributors. All right, I want to generate a confirm email message for new members to add my email to their address book. What's the best way to do this? So Erica, you can do this as a first, like a, like a day zero campaign, a campaign message in a campaign. The way that I like to do this, though, personally, if people are opting in on a landing page, is to use a thank you page. So let's just say, for instance, you have a lead magnet funnel that you've created and you'd have a landing page that would then either redirect to a PDF or to another page that gives them the thing that they wanted. I like to create an interruption there where the thing that redirects is actually a page that says, hey, that thing's on the way to your email right now, but what you want to do first is add my contact information to your address book so you don't miss anything from me. Another thing that you can do, there you go, Greg's showing you where you would put that if you use a separate page. But if you are using landing page settings right here, you can opt to show a message after registration. I, I do believe that redirecting to a static page that gives them nowhere else to go, but go do what you told them to do is typically the best, yields the best result. But let's just say you're at basic and you don't want to use up all of your, you know, your custom pages. You want to use them for other stuff, then by all means, use this feature. But you can put that as a day zero, like, hey, hit replies. So I know you got this and just kind of have that be the first email in your, in your campaigns. Totally a fine way to go. Okay, Carrie says, not related to update, totally fine. If I'm sending out the same email over and over, or I'm sending out a newsletter each month and have the same elements, is that where I can make my own template? Yes, that's a saved reply. That is a saved reply. That is such a great feature in here. Right there, under contact settings. So we have templates for newsletters. If you have, man, if you send out the same email more than five times ever, make a saved reply, copy it from your sent folder, you know, for, to whoever it was sent from. And then just instead of their name, put in the customization field here, contact first name. And now you can just grab it and send it. Guys, every single week, we do this weekly work session. We've got an email list currently of some 15,000 Young Living distributors, right? And not every single person wants to get on this call every single week. So once a week, I send out, I have a saved reply and I edit it before I send it every week to 15,000 people, right? Then, an hour before we go live on Thursdays, there is a scheduled email that goes out to the people, the number of people who are on this list. And it's a saved reply too. Everything's already there. I just change up the stuff that's different for this week. And guys, setting up and running this call, aside from the amount of time it takes to actually be on this call, which is the most important part, setting up this call per week for me takes up less than 20 minutes because we have those saved replies in place. Right? That's what that's for. Use it. Use it. You can have pretty images in it that you just hit the replace button on, which we do every week. You can have some that just stay there, like the banner at the top. You add those options. If you send it out to your team and you have a team logo, have it there. It's there every week. Please use those. They save you tons of time. If you have a Getting Started Resources email, don't just make it an email, also put it as a lesson in your vault. And a lesson in your vault for your members to go like reference or tell them to save their email or something. All right, is there a setting, Michelle asks, for the blog page to have a subscribe pop-up after they scroll 50% of the page? I know there is on other pages. It's not on blogs right now, but can we add that to the list? To have some kind of inline sidebar? It is? We can, we can have a subscribe pop-up?
It's on a, it's on a wishlist. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's on our wishlist. Yes, yeah, being able to generate leads from pop-ups on blog is definitely on the wishlist. All right, Deb, I have a question regarding vaults. I create a vault for non-YOLO members, one for YOLO members, one for business builders. I don't understand how people are added to a vault. Deb, if you go to getoiling.com/membertraining, we show you all of the different methods to do this. You can add them from contact files directly. You can add them in bulk, or you can use landing pages to add them. You can text in to add them. There's lots of different ways and we show you how to do that in detail in that training. All right, Suzette, do you recommend we change our homepage occasionally? Should we pick one and keep it? If we should change it, how often? I would not really bother too much with changing your homepage, honestly. I mean, unless you had some major change or your rebranding or what have you. Most people don't just go to a website.com every week. They go because they were emailed to go find a blog post. They go because they were emailed to go find a new piece of content, a new thing in a member area, a page. It's your content that people are going for and that's what they're going to be directed for. So so long as, excuse me, so long as your homepage addresses all of the right points and last week's training was on that. So creating a beautiful homepage at Get Oiling, if you go to Get, uh, Young, can't use words, youtube.com/getoiling, we have that training in there from last week as well. Really, just keep it simple. It is, it's a pretty business card that points off to other things that you've got that are way more important to them than the homepage. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't stress it too much. All right, trying to figure out how to be able to communicate with my personally enrolled that are within one of my leader legs. So I believe, and guys, clarify this for me, please, when you upload from the VO, you can select personal enrolled only. Oh, no, here we go. You don't even have to do that. Thanks, Greg. Put in your enroller number in this field that Greg is showing you right now. And that's how you communicate with your personals. So filter for that, email, text, vault, whatever, however you want to do it. Perfect.
Yep. And if it's within a specific leg, you may have to also tag the leg with the tree viewer and then say, enroll the view and then tag of whatever the person's leg is.
All right, in the Get Oiling Dashboard, under Manage Blog Posts, is there a way to filter my list of blog posts between drafts and publish? Oh, Jill, that's a great question.
There is not right now, actually. That's another great one for the wishlist.
That's the list. That's a worthy, worthy list item. All right, when importing, what does the checkbox at the bottom mean? Also deduplicate by mobile phone number when you're importing contacts?
Sure, yeah, I can, I can pull that up here while, while I'm talking about it as well, walking through the contact import process. Whoops. The, so what that does, that's really only designed for if you have, if you're importing a list from a tool that is just simply, this is what she's talking about right here, importing a list from somebody who is, or a tool that is, just has like phone numbers. So normally when you import, it does go try to deduplicate by their member number or email address. But if you have a file that you're importing from a list that just has like name and phone number, it's going to complain that you give you an error message saying that you need to have either member number or email address. You can check this box. Then it will let you import it and that then attempts to deduplicate contacts by mobile phone number. You don't want to check this generally speaking, because when you import from the VO, there are people on rare occasions that have the same phone number. And then that will not appear to import correctly because it's going to, you know, it'll overwrite their record multiple times. So this is only if you're importing, if you have a list that just has name and email, or name and phone number, I should say.
Dana says, I'm wanting to utilize my daily activity report for my task list from one of Martha's programs. How would you recommend setting this up? So Dana, everything that's in the Get Oiling platform is, in terms of your, your daily activity and your tasks, those are going to be related specifically to contact actions because we are a CRM, we are contact manager at our core. So I know that in Silver Made Simple, which is one of Martha's courses, she does prescribe daily activities for you. And what you can do when you perform those daily activities is, is to actually go and update the contact record in your Get Oiling system. There's not really a way to, I mean, everything that comes up in your Get Oiling daily email is either suggested by the Digital Upland Coach if you're using it, or it reflects a follow-up plan that you already have applied to a contact. So what I would really look at is, is using our contact manager to log the activity that you're performing in Silver Made Simple. And then also importantly, to manage the things that you should be doing already based on the metrics that you've already put in place. All right, how does the texting option work and which level of membership has this option? Can you, can you add texting to any level, any plan?
Yeah, and actually, every plan does come with texting. It's just there's the two-way texting is the add-on. So by, you know, any plan that you sign up for, if you don't add on two-way texting, you can send texts. It does come from our central shared number so people can't reply. And then it also puts a little footer on there, on the, on the text so that it knows, people know who to reply to. It'll say from your name, from, you know, and your phone number. If you get two-way texting, which you can set up just by clicking this chat link, then you get your own phone number. Then you get a nifty little chat program here, too, that works on your phone and your computer for setting up chats. And then, so you can chat back and forth with people one-to-one. Sending messages in the chat does not use any credits, which is a nice perk of that too. So you can kind of have unlimited texting within that. Broadcast messages still do use credits. And then you get phone calling and a bunch of other cool features, but you can add that to any plan you want to. Even on some of the smaller plans that might have fewer credits, you can always add on more credits as well.
Perfect. All right, another question, anonymous. I wish I knew your name. So your, your question is, how is registration different from creating an account in your member area? So registration really just means when they put their name and contact information into a form or text in a code. That just means that they have registered to receive a thing from you. So that's a newsletter, it's what you're offering on a landing page or potentially access to a vault in your member area. So, so that's really what the difference is. You're, I mean, if you're, you're using us to the greatest extent, you've got, the same person could register in seven different ways and all of them would be valuable and would make sense, right? So registration just simply means that they, they signed up for something and it could be any number of things, not only vaults in your member area. All right, Debbie says, should we link our blog posts to landing pages, linked to custom pages or directly to custom pages? I feel like my brain just did a backflip, Debbie. I bet yours did too. All right, so when you write a blog post and you want people to see it, you want to put that where you normally show up. So you want to broadcast that out. You create a blog post, you go talk about it on Facebook, you talk about it on Instagram, you send it out, the link of it to your subscribers. So they see it. On your blog post, you could absolutely have a link to a landing page because people who find your blog post from lord knows wherever, if they really like what you said on the blog post and you want to capture their email address and their name so that you can be in touch with them further and they want to hear from you, then they can register on that landing page linked to your blog post. Now, in terms of custom pages, you can use those for a lot of things. They could be your homepage. It could be where you deliver a, a lead magnet. It could be any number of things, but most importantly, you can link a blog post to a landing page. So you, you put that landing page link on your blog post and take that blog post link and put it beneath your YouTube videos, put it on your social posts, put it in your, your Instagram, you know, whatever it is that you'd like to do, however you like to share. All right, Mary Kay's asking, does it write over older imports, like when you upload from your VO? It merges information, right? So if you've got a contact that you've got notes written on and, you know, something changes in the VO, your notes are going to stay the same, right?
Yeah, yeah, right. It does merge those. I mean, basically it imports the fields that you have selected on the import screen. And then it leaves the rest alone. And if you're in a, you want to get into advanced, there's some checkboxes there where you can exclude specific fields from being overwritten as well.
Perfect. Can you buy a vault without upgrading the whole plan? If you're at basic and above, basically, if you're at the member levels that afford the member area, then you absolutely can add on vaults without upgrading your whole plan. Reach out. We got you. All right, if I manually created a member, should I download from YOLO and merge so I don't lose past, lose past actions? So what's the best way to make sure that you keep those past actions while also getting that VO information up to date?
If you have a small enough, you know, let's say it's one person and you know they're coming, the best way, or an easy way to do the merge before import is just go put their member number in their contact record in Get Oiling first and then it will automatically merge it. If you've got a bunch of new people, which, you know, if you've got a larger team, obviously you're not going to be going and copying and pasting member numbers to 20, 50, 100 people at a time, then you just use the merge feature after you've imported them.
All right, is there a way to bulk delete tags? I have tagged some contacts as about to go inactive and want to remove them. If I do a new upload of my VO, does that then remove contacts who are no longer members?
Sounds like there's a couple of questions there. So the bulk delete, let's see, under, under contact manage, the easiest way to get rid of a tag is just go to your contact manager, actions, add campaign or tags, choose the tag, tag or tags you want to remove and that will remove it from everybody that'll, and it'll also remove it from your list of tags. As far as like, if I do a new upload from my VO, does it then remove contacts who are no longer members? It does not. It will not automatically remove anybody on import. So the nice thing is you get to keep those people in your list and continue to market to them over time. So some people will come back, you know, it's not like they fall off and they're, they're gone forever. So you can totally keep them in there.
Awesome. Diane asks, can you explain what the maintenance of my contacts, beginning of the month, end of the month, importing steps need to be to keep my contacts properly updated? So, I mean, simply uploading your VO file correctly, just doing that, I think, once a week, if your team is growing, is, is sufficient. If you want to follow some of the strategies that we've taught in earlier work session trainings, and again, the, like, one of them that I guess I'll link several below the recording of this. If you go back to, I think it's Educate Your Members in Less Than an Hour Per Month is the name of the video on YouTube, on our YouTube channel that shows you the exact steps along with a checklist to follow. I would recommend that you check that out if you want to get into the specifics of that. But again, just simply updating and uploading the VO file is going to be sufficient. If you want to get more advanced, there's definitely ways to do that and that video shows you one of those ways. All right, Suzanne, is there a specific training for changing the menu? Can you point us in the right direction for it? This is, let me see, there, we've got a couple of homepage trainings, one of which we did last week where we did demonstrate the, the menu. So that's, that's one that I think it's how to build a gorgeous Get Oiling homepage. It's on our YouTube channel. And also, do we have anything in our, in our resource library about menu, custom menus?
There's some written help text. So if you get to be just typing in menu down here, custom menu and changing the homepage, we do have some articles on, on how to operate that.
Great, guys, make sure you're using this. Please make sure you're using this because a lot of the times your answers are in here. And if you, we need, you know, more specific information, then obviously reach out. We're here for you, but you're going to find a lot of stuff that you need right here. There's a lot of articles in there. And on our YouTube channel, of course. All right, so on our dashboard, why does my name show on the pie chart? Is there a way that my name doesn't show so I can see who has in fact been looking at my site? So if your name is showing up on your, your dashboard and sort of what's been happening with your site, it's just reflecting like you testing your site out. So I don't know how we would remove that though, Greg, what, what are your ideas?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's probably, I think, maybe a wishlist item. I've heard that from a couple of people that have that removed.
All right, when I go to messages, it's from Tina, and send, there are not messages shown, but I have emails through the system. So if you go to, if you click messages, that is going to show everything that has been sent?
This is, I guess there's a clarification on this. There, it, it does send the five or more contacts that will show up here. So other than that, it does show up like in the contact record itself under past actions.
On the individual person?
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's to fewer, fewer than five people, you want to go to their individual contact card?
Right.
Awesome. All right, is there a certain day, time of day campaigns go out if listed as in one a day or three in a day? Not sure about that last part, but our standard time, if you don't have advanced settings in place, I believe, is six o'clock Central Time US.
It's actually five, five o'clock Central US, but, but yeah. If you have premium or higher, you can actually expand, you'll also have this advanced features button here, which then lets you choose specific times of day, which would let them, you send multiple messages on a given day.
And if you, and if these are text campaigns, the, the send on is actually going to be, like, you can send it one minute after or two minutes after. Like, you can actually do a fast campaign that way as well, if you wanted to send out multiple texts in a day. All right, where do I go to create a campaign of my own that I am writing?
Yeah, it's under contact settings and campaigns. If you want to start with another one as a template, click this little copy icon here and it'll duplicate it. Otherwise, you can click create campaign and it'll walk you through the steps. And I think we've got, we have an in-depth training on that on our YouTube channel, if you search for campaigns as well.
Yes, several, several of them. All right, in the campaigns, I just opened a built-in new member campaign and I do want to put my name to name shown to contact. And it currently has new member tips. So right now, I'm pretty sure name shown to contact is, it's going to be the name that you have on file, like with your account, right? Like, this doesn't actually change, does it?
Yeah, so what this is here, actually, on the bottom of every campaign email that goes out or any bulk email, for that matter, there's a link that says manage your subscription. And what it does, it takes them to a list of all the campaigns that that contact is subscribed to. And it shows them this name in that list so that they can. And it shows them this name and that list so that they can choose which ones they want to unsubscribe from. So if you just put your name in there, they'll just see your name in there and they won't know which campaign it is. So you want to have a, like a, kind of a, I guess, contact friendly name. You know, maybe it would, because, you know, for, for those of you, for example, using content providers and it's like Grow EO 101, that might not be what you want to have shown to somebody. So maybe you want to put a friendlier name in there, like Essential Oils is a good example here. So they know exactly what it is that they're unsubscribing from.
All right. Is there a way to search for team members who do not have an enroller anymore?
Probably not. I know, I haven't confirmed this, but I have heard from one person who did some sleuthing. And he found out that there's like some specific enroller number. It's like this five-digit number, I guess, that you can type in. I don't know what it is offhand, or zero or something like that. Once they go, if you're importing inactives or what have you. But, but there isn't a way to just say, right now anyway, to filter by enroller blank. You know, that's not a possibility at the moment with this.
Is there any distinction in the VO? Like, could you maybe isolate your VO file and then upload that set of people as orphan? Or however you want to put it?
Maybe. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but that's, that's a good possibility if there is some way of doing that. I know like if you go in the previous months that have inactive members, maybe you could tag them differently as you import them.
Yeah. If any of you guys sleuthed this out, we want to invite you to come participate on a live training. We'll get back to you. Come find us. All right. Allison said, I ended up deleting the campaign and re-adding it to the new members. She should get her kit soon. Yay. Would it be best to change the days she receives her messages? So right now, she should get the welcome email today, another in a couple of days. And on day 10 about opening up the kit, I don't want to speed it up for everyone. I would just like her to get the first few messages today, tomorrow and the next day, and then keep the rest the same.
Yeah. So that's probably a case where, let me pull up my contact here. You might have to go in and like give it a nudge every day, so to speak. Like if I come down here to my, my contact and I click on one of these campaigns, and it only has one in there. Let me pick one that has multiples. Maybe this one does. Okay. So like today, we just re-added her, re-added her, so it's going to send day zero. You could, if you wanted to, before it sends during the day, click this little circular arrow. It's going to reset that to that given day. And so she will get the second one today. And then tomorrow you'd have to go in and click this. Well, it depends on the timing of them. If they're spaced out one day after another, it would just run automatically. But if you wanted to, if they were spaced multiple days out, you could go in and then click this one and basically kind of give it a bump every day until she's caught up.
Yep. That's, and you know, be in touch with her about that. Another thing that you could do, if it's just for this one person, and this is just, you know, a learning exercise now. What you can do is you could copy the content of the campaign messages and then just schedule the messages. Just go ahead and send out the information that you want to today, email, 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 and then schedule out the remainder if you wanted to do that. So just copy what's there and then go create a message for her and then have those scheduled, if you wanted to do that. Obviously let her know, you know, that you're learning the tech here. You know, that you want to make sure she's getting all the right information. But, you know, be gentle with yourself. You're probably 10 times more worried about this than any of your members would be. And good job on you for, for figuring this out. Yeah. All right. Jill asks, when someone puts their info on a landing page, is there a way for them to designate if they prefer to receive info via email or text? It's not, it's not an automated thing, however, you could.
It, it does, I think, based on, let's see if I, I'll just pick one of these here. Based on what fields you have required. So if you would require that, so all the fields always show, like if I, all three of these will always show on this specific landing page feature. Now, if you require one of them, obviously they have to do that. But it does opt them into whatever medium that they enter. So if you have email and phone both required, for example, it's going to opt them into both of those, which you can also control at a campaign level if you don't want them to actually get both. So there's a setting about that, but it does. Effectively putting their contact information in one of these fields marks them as, yeah, they want to receive by email or by phone.
And the thing is too, not every campaign that you send is going to be the same and it's not going to be sent to everyone. So if you are segmenting your list and, and using campaigns and tags and things like this, I mean, the preference is really going to be reflected based on what they opt in for. So let's just say, for instance, you have a member education vault, which we taught you how to make a couple of weeks ago on Weekly Work Session, where I'm using Grow Workspace as an example. Inside of a lesson in your vault for your members for education, there is a sway embedded. Grow Workspace makes beautiful sways. And then beneath it, you have text, this, this number, this name, whatever, to, or this word, to my Git Oiling phone number. And then they can receive by text because they opted in for that text campaign, that specific bit of information. So, I mean, I would really just kind of keep it like, you know, default to email because it's the smarter thing to do, honestly. You've got more room to work there. If you want to, maybe just send both. If, you know, if you say, hey, I just updated the blog or updated the member area or what have you, like, you know, you could send a text out that way. But usually text is most effective when somebody opts in for very specific bits of information that they want to engage with for a brief period of time, or as a reminder for them to go see a longer thing that you wrote, right? So it's one of two. So if you are using the different, you know, giving them different opportunities to opt in different ways, then it's, it's going to work for the way it's intended and you don't have to worry about jumping through hoops, basically. All right.
Marie actually had a quick follow-up on that inactive member. Apparently the number is 14528 if they're inactive or terminated. So 14528. I guess there's some secret number behind the scenes that Young Living puts in there.
Now we know.
So yeah.
Now we know. Thank you, Queen Green. All right. New here. Hi, hi Stephanie. Can your two-way texting number be your own current cell number? No ma'am. It is an additional business number and this actually keeps your personal cell number from being out there on the world wide web. But you can receive your text replies, right? Like people can respond to your number and then you can carry on from there.
And if they call you, it'll actually ring your phone too.
Yes. It actually works as a phone. I'm a basic member. Looking through my dashboard, are vaults included at all at the basic level? Yes. Yes, you do get a vault. You get 10 pages. You get several, several online classes, I believe.
I think it's one right now.
One, one online class? Yeah, you actually have, you have at basic, you have a taste of everything we have to offer. And then you have expanding capability with those same features and customization of those features, the higher up you go. All right. All right. Cassandra, I sent a couple of emails to three contacts two days ago. It did show up on my dashboard that they opened the email, but it doesn't show up in messages. So this would be because those were sent to fewer than five people, like Greg just mentioned. So there were a few reasons, like we used to have that messages page. Like for those of you who send a lot of stuff out, it was kind of flooded and really hard to manage. And so that's why that stipulation is there. If it's sent to fewer than five, you just want to head over to their contact cards and you can review that information directly on those contact cards. All right. Tina, if you run a report in the VO from a year ago and then two years ago, et cetera, your inactive members will show, export the list, import into Git Oiling, and it will ignore duplicates. Love it. I love you guys with your green hacks. All right. Paula says, is there a way to include a person's sponsor name in a bulk email?
Currently there is not the sponsor name. And I think maybe what you're talking about here, just to show this quick, is when you're sending a bulk email or a text for that matter, there's this little bubble, chat bubble thing here that lets you add other keywords, or not keywords, but like specific fields. Like if you want to personalize a message, you can put first name of contact in there. There isn't one for sponsor, what do you want, sponsor name or something like that. There's a member number, but no sponsor name right now. Something we could probably add to our wishlist.
All right. Wendy had a question. So since basic only allows one class in your vault, would you recommend setting up a link style page and have a bunch of gross way links to, for your classes? So it's just one place to go, or copy and pasting images on a page for them to scroll? So Wendy, it really depends on the strategy. I mean, if, if you are going to use the Git Oiling vault for one thing, if you're going to have one vault and one class, and that's where you're at right now, you're not ready to upgrade, then you need to be using that as a member resource. Something that will take the, the burden of member education and you repeating yourself or having to wear the professor hat on member education and get that off your shoulders. Okay? So what you want to do, and we taught this in the, the, one of the more recent, like how to get your member group off of Facebook. That's on our YouTube channel, how to get your member group off of Facebook. What we do is we look at structuring a member group on Git Oiling, which is a vault, to where you might have a page or two in there that explains some things, but importantly, you have an online class. And guys, when you have an online class, you don't have a limit to the number of lessons that are in it. So what I recommend is that you set up the first section of that online class as onboarding. So here's what you need to know when you, you're first getting started. Here's how you log into your VO. Here's how you find your member number. Here's how you get in, get in touch with your sponsor. Here's how you get in touch with your, you know, further ranked upline or whatever. Here's how you place an order, all that stuff. And then if you're using Grow Workspace information, for instance, like I just said a few minutes ago, you create a lesson on Kidsense so that people want to learn about kids and oils or the Kidsense line specifically, can click on that lesson. They can scroll through the sway. It's right there. And then they can text in and opt in for the text class if they want that. Or you can include the images below that as well. And just import all that beautiful stuff that you got from them in those bundles into that one place. And so that way, it's all easily referenceable. They aren't having to scroll through a page. They're actually in an online class where they can, you know, click off. And you can even have discussion underneath that, right? So you can start a discussion on your Kidsense lesson page that says, do you use Kidsense? How do you use it? And then people can add their own testimonials there. And doesn't that become a lot more powerful for your members? So not just see, hey, here's all the cool stuff. This is what YL sells about it. This is blah, blah, blah. But then there's people who are like, you know, I used it and this happened, right? Like you can have all of that about one product line on one page, which would be in a, in a lesson inside of an online class inside of your vault. All right. Allison says, I'm about to import my contacts from the VO. I checked what to download and I'm looking at other options in the contact import. Choose fields page. Do I need to check for existing contacts only? Only update selected fields in the other options section? I think you talked about not clicking on deduplicate, but I wonder if that would be a good idea since I have duplicates rather than merging. Also, should I put member IDs in before importing? Wonder if, she's wondering if she should check all those boxes.
Yeah, I don't think you have to check them all by any means. You know, auto correct capitalization is a nice one to have. Not every file requires that. Young Living does have, their, the VO often has the uppercase. So this is a nice one to check. We're going to try to correct that a little bit if you can on the way in. Otherwise, these two are similar, like this one, what this is, is just literally what it says. It only imports a new context. It, it just, you know, updates tags on existing contacts. It doesn't actually update any information. If you want to get more specific, you can check this box and then you can choose which fields you want on existing contacts to update. So you can, you can do that if you want to. You know, if you're like, I've personalized all my mobile phone numbers or my name. The most common one is probably name because sometimes you get a company name in there or whatever. So you can uncheck name if you want to. But that's totally up to you. If you're not like updating the data, then you can just leave them all there. So I don't think you'd ever have to check all the boxes. This first one is a nice one if you're importing from the VO. Otherwise, these two, maybe if you're kind of, if you've updated customized information in your contacts database. And this one is, this bottom one is only if you're importing a file that doesn't have a member number or an email address.
Awesome. You guys, so many great questions today. Welcome new members, especially all of you who are just getting at it, learning this. Debbie had, as she mentioned in the questions here, that she was having trouble doing a custom homepage. Debbie, last week, we interviewed one of our members who created a course on how to get this done. If you go and you look at our last YouTube video before this one, how to create a beautiful homepage, there's a link in the description there that will get you onto her list, that will get you in touch, will get you the first lesson that you need, sort of a sneak peek to her course. We've got, I don't know if any of you guys want to pop a hand up. If you took Allison's course and you believe that those pages are beautiful, because you all have seen some, they're gorgeous, definitely share the love. There they go. Yeah. So definitely check that out. It's a really, really great training. And I believe if you go into the help section, that little help button up there and Git Oiling, we have an older series of videos, but one of them was actually from when we released the, the custom pages feature. And we actually show you how to use that right there in 90-day challenge, week nine. So fabulous. All right, you guys, great job today. Long training and, and thank you for being here for all of it. Paula says she loves Ally's custom homepage class for all week and she has already created hers. Ally said conservatively. And I was talking to Jackie earlier this morning, if you're here, hi. She, she took the class last week and Ally said that this should take about like maybe a week, right? To make it. And Jackie was like, I got mine done in two hours. So, and guys, Jackie is not someone who is long on patience. So just understand, if, if, if a red impatient person can knock it out in two hours, you can too. And it's gorgeous. She did a beautiful job. She's not a designer. All right. So you guys, thank you so much for being here. We'll be back next week. If you don't know, go to git oiling.com/weeklyworksession to get notified about all these trainings and join us on a future one. If you want to request us to hold your hand and walk you through one of these, send us an email. Let us know. We're here for that. We'll screen share, walk with you and build things with you, all that kind of good stuff. All right. Thank you and we'll see you next week. Bye guys.
Bye guys. Have a great week.
See ya.